Good morning, everybody. Today is Monday, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. The time is nine oh one A M. I'm going to call this regular term meeting with B County Commissioners Court to order. We're physically located at B County Courthouse Commissioners Courtroom number one ten, one oh five West Corpus Christi Street, Beville, Texas, seven eight one oh two. That was agenda item number one. We'll move to agenda item number two, prayer. If everybody will please stand and join. Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you so much for all your blessings. Today, we ask you to watch over all that we do, all of our paperwork, and guide us in all this that we have here in this court. We ask you to watch over our first responders, especially the ones who were just, all the fires that are blazing in California, and keep them safe. We thank you for the rain that we've gotten and for the rain that we're gonna give. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen?
Amen.
Is it a little bit?
That was perfect.
Please join me in pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas pledge.
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Excellent. Yeah. We're off to a good start. It's the last meeting of the year. Happy New Year, everybody. That was agenda item number three. This is agenda item number four, recognition of visitors. Happy New Year to everybody. Thank you all for being here this morning. Um, if there's anybody that does not want to make a public comment, but does want to identify themselves for our record, you may do so at this time just by raising your hand, and I'll identify you, and then you just stand up or seat as you're, uh, as you're able, stay seated as you're able, and give us your name and who you're with, if you're with an entity. Uh, but no comment at all. Uh, is there anybody who wants to? Yes, sir.
Robert Busman, we're with South Texas Trail Ride. We're here to discuss about the pothole.
Yes, sir, Mr. Busman. Thank you for being here.
I have Travis Felpper for Trail Boss.
How are you, sir?
Mayor Pollard, our assistant trail boss.
How are you, sir?
Thank you all for having us.
Thank you, guys, for being here this morning. We'll get to your agenda items shortly. Anybody else? Okay. Here are none. We'll move on. Thank you all for being here, and a Happy New Year. Agenda item number five, Commissioners Court Opening Remarks. Do we have any idea? Is it you? Sure. All right. Commissioner Ling, you have the floor, sir.
All right. Hope everyone had a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Um, I want to thank Judge Moro for doing the swearing in on the elected officials.
Thank you, Judge.
You're welcome. You did a good job.
No, thanks.
Also, to congratulate all the elected officials that were elected to, or re-elected to their respective seats. Congratulations.
Should we just let the record reflect that you did swear allegiance to all of the constitutions of the United States?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I appreciate all the constitutions with the United States and the Texas, so you did.
Oh, there's a lot in Texas.
We gotta meet you. Everyone else is there. Good job. Um, thank you, Roden Bridge, Ray, all you guys, um, all the work I've been doing on Ridgeway. Uh, some people called me on that, and we're very appreciative of that, so thank you for that. Um, also, I attended a judge and commissioners conference in Edna, and, uh, had a few other calls, uh, about signage, some stolen signs and knockdown signs and stuff like that. And, um, once again, Roden Bridge, thank you, guys, for taking care of all that stuff. Um, we, uh, hosted a community movie night. It was a good turnout, a little cool, but we had plenty of hot chocolate, so that was a good turnout, and everyone attended that. And, uh, the purpose of that is just to bring the community out for something fun to do, get them together. It didn't cost them a dime to do it, so. Uh, attended a L E P C meeting this past Wednesday, and, um, that was a well-attended meeting with a lot of good information. Also, I want to thank, uh, Mayor Willow and the city of Beville for addressing two enormous, uh, trash issues on the west side. Uh, we had a front coming in, and it was gonna blow what these people had stacked up next to dumpsters and on the fence line and outside of the residence. It was gonna blow trash and whatnot six city blocks wide, and, uh, they took care of that right away. Uh, thank you, guys, for that. Also, anyone interested in attending the B County Day at the Capitol in Austin on February twenty-sixth, please get with me, or you can go to my Facebook page and scan the Q R code. You also can get with Lieutenant Manios at the Chamber of Commerce. And, um, from what I understand, that it is, uh, B County has always had a really low attendance in, uh, in going to this, and so we're trying to change that this year and just flood, um, with many people from B County to go represent. Uh, this Thursday, I'll be attending the Crime Stoppers fundraiser. Um, that's always a good event, good food, good speakers, so look forward to doing that. And then last but not least, I'm gonna be attending the Thursday of the eighty-ninth Legislative Session in Austin tomorrow. With that, I'll carry to my left.
Thank you, Commissioner Farias. May proceed. Don't worry. It's, no, no, don't get, don't get too excited, guys. I've changed the order now to provide a little bit better continuity. We're just very excited to hear what Commissioner Farias has to say.
Uh, the first call I had was, uh, we're having a lot of big truck issues on three oh one. Had several of the community members call from over there. The trucks from the business that's behind, uh, Macabar Airport Road are using three oh one as a shortcut to six seventy-three, and it causes some problems. So, we're working at creating either a load zone, but I'm gonna have to split that with Commissioner Dewitt, because that's half of his road, and I have the other half.
He's got the big half of it.
So, uh, I got a call from Jesse from Pettis, uh, the, uh, who was the waterworks? What is it? The sewer system and water systems in Pettis?
Yes.
Jesse, yes. He was asking about the G L O grant, and we did pass all of our last rounds of questioning, so I think that, Jenny, we haven't had anything else?
No, they started again. I'm gonna reach out again to G L O directly.
So, uh, we did finish the Langley building. All construction is done, and everything is complete there. Final, so we got that.
Wow, the only one that's excited about completing a project that's taken a dozen years? It's not, it's not Commissioner's fault.
No, they keep taking my money. Every time I do something, they say, hey, we need that money from that one.
Good job. Thank you. I'm excited.
All right. I spoke to Trupri Yenik, and he has fulfilled all of his requirements. He can now work alone at the weight station. Doesn't need anybody to assist him, and right now, he's in Rivera, but he will be back up here working on both the weight stations at fifty-nine and on one eighty-one. So, that's a, that's a good thing for us here. Um, there's an item coming up on the agenda, um, further down, um, the courthouse grant that Jennifer and I are working on, and it is to get the courthouse back up to where it's supposed to be, and it was dropped many years ago, but there is still monies left over on that grant, so we're gonna chase those monies and see if we can restore this courthouse back.
Great. That's, that's a good one.
Including the clock.
Including the clock and the torch on the, the Liberty Day.
Awesome.
Had a couple of calls on, uh, some potholes on Papaya, Des Smith area, so I'm gonna get with Roden Bridge and point those out, or they might have already taken care of them. I don't know yet, Ray or Jonathan, whether you have. I've got a couple of calls on those. I got, uh, Debbie working on getting rid of a lot of the old computer equipment that's, was stashed away in the Langley building. Now it's in the old, old, old jail, and Craig Oliver has some in his office, too, that we need to get rid of. So, we, we gotta get that done there. Thank you, Judge, for the strand in January one. Appreciate that. And then the, uh, also wanna push the B I S D groundbreaking for the new school that's coming up. I think that's to be announced because of the weather. They have a lot of children out there, so I'll keep an eye on that. We'll try and publicize it on Facebook, so we can all join in, kind of help those guys out. I will be attending Crime Stoppers this Thursday, and, um, the last part is protest with the courthouse boiler. We've been working on it for four days. They're still here. They're here again today, this morning, and we're gonna have a meeting at one o'clock to see what we're gonna do moving forward with this heating problem here. So, I am working on it, and we'll get it done, Judge.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. With that, I'll pass to Commissioner DeWitt.
Good. You know, I'll, uh, see if I can give the court a little bit of time. Anyhow, good morning, everyone. Happy New Year. Uh, first of all, I'd like to start off with a little recognition. Uh, last year, I think we had a very, very good year. Uh, this year's gonna even be a better year. I'd like to recognize all of the county employees that supported our efforts in assisting the court, assisting the county, assisting you, and running our government. I mean, each and every one of these individuals bring a unique skill set to the group, and it's a pretty, pretty amazing amount that we're able to accomplish with the few people that we have. So, who knows? Everyone is working for the county, so I appreciate that. I know our constituents, uh, appreciate it as well that we're utilizing their funding, uh, the best way possible. Also, I'd like to, uh, recognize all the newly elected officials. Good luck this year. Uh, the court is here to support any of your needs. Just let us know how we can help. We'll do that. Um, I don't know if you ever had, or you looked at something and said, you know, something just not quite right. Well, at the E O C building, we were almost in the final stages of completing our parking lot. They put up the post for the, uh, for the fence. Yeah, I looked at it and said, oh, something just doesn't look right, but, you know, it's Friday afternoon, and I think it'll be okay. Uh, the next day, thanks to Commissioner Dewitt, I got to receive another call saying, hey, they'll put the fence up, which at the time I looked at it, the fencing wasn't up, just the post were up. He said, I think it might be a little bit too close. Well, it's funny how one thing can lead to another. Well, me, me, I came to see the, uh, his text. Uh, drove out there, looked at the parking lot, put my vehicle in the parking lot, said, okay, yeah, it is kind of close. It'll be okay if, as long as you pull in forward, but if you back in, it's not gonna work, and that's where the problem started. And that led to the next thing, investigation of what type of parking lot was actually designed for the E O C. There's basically three, three designs. One is for small car, standard car, and then S U V and larger vehicles. Well, at the E O C, we're gonna have large vehicles. Bottom line is, unfortunately, I was not able to back out without getting the vehicles in back of me. I wasn't able to back out without hitting the vehicle that would be inside, because when they did the design, they didn't calculate the radius for turning into the parking lot or turning back out. So, the parking lot's too small. So, we, uh, we did a little brainstorming, and right now, the, the best possible solution is to basically add some additional concrete to expand the parking lot to allow a better parking area, especially in event of emergency. It's just not gonna work. This will be to the west side. On the south side, we have another issue where, uh, we're gonna have to limit that area to small cars only. So, anyhow, a lot of work was done there. Uh, more to come with that once we get pricing and the final solution, we, we go back to the court. Uh, some general information on E O C. The project is, uh, progressing very well. Uh, concrete was poured for the generator. Uh, the generator probably installed this week. It was scheduled for last week, but due to the weather, uh, the one area we get a crane out, so hopefully that'll get done this week. Uh, also, I'll be attending the Crime Stoppers meeting, which I'm looking forward to that event. In Skidmore, uh, we, uh, just so everyone can be aware, because of the many fires that we're having, the winds and so forth, the forestry service has been deployed to B County here to support some of the firefighting. Also, I'd like to thank Roden Bridge for trimming much-needed trees on Corrigan Road to help prevent any blind spots, and also strapping of the speed locks that are sticking on I S D. On the J P, uh, still working on renovations. More to come with that. Uh, I got some new information here that I'll bring forward to the court, uh, as soon as it gets finalized. But then, uh, Judge, I'll pass the time back on to, is there a direction?
Thank you, Commissioner. Are you sure I'm gonna go ahead and go? I'm gonna let you go after me, so relationships that I do, I will retain the ability to, I don't stop you if you go too far. I will. I will.
We'll be here by noon, sir.
Excellent. That'll be good for everybody in the audience. Listen, um, just a couple of brief things. First of all, again, Happy New Year. Um, uh, I echo the sentiments of my commissioners. Congratulations to our newly elected officials. Very, very excited, um, about the future of Beville or B County over the course of this next, uh, calendar year. Um, I anticipate in this first quarter, we'll be closing off some larger, uh, projects that have, uh, that we've been working diligently and very well on for a, uh, for a good long time. Um, and we'll be looking, hopefully, to, uh, to some, uh, new future larger proj- uh, projects with available funding that doesn't come out of our, uh, reserve fund if at all possible. Is that the right way to say it? Yeah, I saw you starting to stare at it really hard. Um, I don't have anything to announce at this time. I'm just saying, last year, your county government did a really good job, and that starts here at Commissioner's table, but it goes to every single department that elected official and employee working, uh, uh, on behalf of the county. So, thank you, guys, for all of your collective, uh, efforts, your concern, your care, your willingness to stand up when you think something should be done another way, um, and, and letting, uh, everybody know. That's how we get to, uh, operate the best that we can is through a collaborative, uh, supportive effort. I know at times, uh, we may get a little crosswise. We may get a little passionate about a particular interest that we have, and it's important that we all recognize that, that although we may be strong in our feelings on some particular issue, uh, we need to be able to discuss those in a open, honest, and, uh, and be able to share some of that passion and express that passion without it coming back, uh, as a, as the form of a fight or an entrenching. Uh, and I just want y'all to know, I think everybody's done an excellent job. Um, it's not my place to tell everybody, good job. I'm just part of the machine as well, and I recognize and I appreciate everything that everybody else has done this year. So, thank you all. Uh, best wishes to you personally for, uh, twenty twenty-five, and, uh, and I'm very confident that twenty twenty-five will be a great year for B County. Secondly, uh, shortly before the end of the year, I had one, uh, citizen that I know very well, uh, call me and, and ask me if it was true that I was about to issue a warrant for his arrest for failing to show up at a grand jury. Um, so, this is not necessarily just for y'all in the audience, but to the folks that may be listening online, or any citizens that are in the audience today. Um, and I'm ninety-nine point nine-nine percent sure sheriff's office is aware of this. I know the district clerk and the county clerk are aware of this, and I know the district attorney, and at least one of the district judges' offices is aware of this, but apparently, there's some weird scam where you get a text message or a telephone call, and they tell you, hey, you missed a grand jury summons. The county judge is gonna sign a warrant, and you're gonna go, come get picked up, uh, and arrested. Um, it's a scam. It's not real. First of all, I don't sign warrants for grand jury. Grand jury is a district court function. That's a district attorney, a district judge situation. It's not a county, uh, uh, situation. Secondly, uh, if you, if you received a grand jury notice, and it's important because the district clerk sent out grand jury notices for grand jury summons for January twenty-third, so if you got that, it's real. If you have any questions at all, just reach out to some elected official. They can, we can get you in, as long as it's a county elected official, we can get you to the right person to make sure that it's either a valid, uh, summons or it's an invalid summons. And, uh, just be mindful, uh, people who want to separate you from your money are always out there trying to come up with a new conniving, underhanded way to do so. So, be, be vigilant. Listen to your parents, your aunts, your uncles. Uh, if you hear or see them say anything that doesn't seem legitimate, please question it, and let's try to protect our own against these outside forces. Oh, thank you. That's all I have. Um, it's been busy. I hope it's going to be busy, uh, this year. And, um, Commissioner Dewitt, you have the floor, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Lenny. I had to add on before you get to me.
Oh, my goodness. We are really, that's fine, Commissioner Ling.
Well, if I don't have this on, I'll have to hear it from mom, and I don't want to do that.
Well, she, she knows all my private offices, so please continue.
No, um, just a reminder, the B County Junior Live Talk Show begins next week. Everyone's invited to come out and support, and the, uh, auction will be Saturday, January the twenty-fifth. So, that was a reminder.
Thank you. No, that's great. Yeah, please go out if you.
The Tuesday is the public sale, the homing and public sale.
Tomorrow?
No, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Just for homing and.
So, if you want some cookies, pie, a cake, usually those items can go for sale. There's still minimum donation of twenty dollars, right?
Yeah. Yes.
No? Yes.
There, there's a question.
If they want to sell it. That's great. And our live stock show is one of the greatest programs we have in B County. Anything for the?
No, that was the.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Dewitt, we're all waiting breath-bated.
Well, I, I, Judge, and the latitude I'm gonna ask for, I have one item that, that, that I can add after we have a public speaker, if I can add to their.
Certainly.
Information. I, I don't want to let it go now, because it's, it's earth-shattering.
So, do you have anything else?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
Uh, attended local L E P C meeting at the Coliseum. That's the, uh, uh, the local, uh, what? Emergency planning committee, which is very important. I think a couple of the commissioners were there also. It was very good, very well-attended.
Excellent.
Lot of good information. That's, that's a great committee. Uh, I hadn't been one in a while, and they're doing a great thing. Uh, went to the Commissioners, uh, Conference in Edna with, uh, Commissioner Lenny was there. One thing that came up in that conference that I want to share with everybody, we had a police chief from, was it from Pinkmont? Pete, Police Chief, gave us, uh, information on bleed kits. Now, what bleed kits are, if you have a traumatic injury, you've got a, a vessel, an artery that's, that's, you're bleeding out. You've gotta take immediate action so you don't bleed out. He told us about the bleed kits, the tourniquets, the, uh, anti-clotting material, the whole nine yards. Uh, I immediately went on, ordered five bleed kits. I've got them in all my vehicles. I've got it on my gator at the ranch. Uh, we do a lot of shooting out there. My son is a former Marine. He carries one on his, on his, on his boot all the time. If you have research bleed kit, hopefully, you'll never, ever, ever need one, but it's one of those things that's like insurance or anything else. When you need it, you need it. You don't have a choice. You may not need it on yourself, but you may someone else's life. Uh, the police officers and sheriffs, deputies and all went through alert training. They used tourniquets. They showed us how to stop the bleeding. It's extremely important that you do that immediately. And when I grew up in the Boy Scouts, when we did tourniquets, they said you're supposed to release them every few minutes. That has changed. Once you put a tourniquet on, it stays. It's not released until it gets to the doctor or to the hospital. So, when you get a chance, research bleed kits, get them, show your family where they are. We've got one in the kitchen hanging up. Uh, it's important. It's one of those things. You don't need it till you need it. Hopefully, you'll never need it, and ten years from now, you can throw it away and get another. So, look at, look for bleed kit. Uh, the one I ordered was from Amazon, and I ordered five, and they came from China, to be honest. And they came in a packet that you put on a pack or whatever.
Well, the company person of the year.
No longer exists. And, uh, I did get them. They went through customs, the whole nine yards. They're in a green packet, but, uh, go on Amazon and research bleed kits. Get it done. That was my one.
Uh-huh. Yeah.
That's Mr. Smith.
Yeah, that's what it is right there.
Something else I was trying to keep y'all up to date on the wind and solar farms in North B County. The lights have been on lately, and those folks up there have me on speed dial, and for those of you that aren't aware of it, ours did is the company that runs them, they put radar up that the only time the lights come on is when there's aircraft in the area. What's happening now, and I didn't know this till we had a meeting in, uh, Mineral, at the Mineral Breakfast, there's some people flying drones up there, and there's one or two big drones, and they may be setting off those lights. Now, why people in North B County and their, their rural people are, are running big drones at night, uh, may be something nefarious. I don't know. But from what I understand, it's not the little drones. I said, how'd work can a little drone set off that radar? I said, no, no, these are big drones. So, I don't know exactly where they are, but the information I got is, is accurate. Uh, had several calls, and Commissioner Lenny had several calls about, are we fencing or fencing? In other words, if I had cattle on my place and they get on his place, whose responsibility is it? It depends on where it is. Okay, at one time, almost a hundred years ago, there had to be a local, there still has to be a local election if you want to fence people's cattle out. Okay? If you want to fence them in, same thing. If you want your cattle to stay in, you have to have an election to keep everybody's cattle out of your place. There were elections held in B County in the twenties, thirties, or whenever they were, and there were two precincts that elected to do that. The problem is, no one knows where those precinct boundaries are now, because the precincts have changed. So, right now, B County is a fenced-out county. So, right now, B County is a fenced-out county. In other words, if I have land, it's up to me to keep the cattle out of it, except on state highways and interstates. Changes there. Foreign market roads, same thing as a county road. Cattle have the right of way. Not a good thing, but that's the way it is in B County right now. I've confirmed this with the cattle ranger. The cattle ranger website, I think, is being corrected as we speak, because it still shows two precincts, I think it's your precinct and my precinct, that the local election said we're doing it different, okay? The whole county is that way now. I'm your representative with the P3 operation on electricity. We contracted with them since 2002. I've got some information, since 2002, what it is, they have natural gas contracts where they go out and buy cheap natural gas, and we get reduced electric rates because of it. It's a complicated process. But the information I have, since 2002, B County has saved $474,000 because of these contracts, which is significant.
That's awesome.
And Judge, if you will, I'll ask for some latitude, we have a public speaker from Real that's gonna speak, and I'd like to add to her comments, so that completes my comments.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number six is public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to address Commissioner's Court? I believe Ms. Gonzalez, you're here on behalf of Real. Why don't you come on down, stand at the lectern, identify yourself for the record, and then tell us what you have to tell us. You can stand up.
Okay.
I'm sorry to need to hide your phone.
Hi, good morning, Judge, good morning, Commissioners. I am Crystal Gonzalez with Real E mobility management department. So, I'm here to inform y'all on some new services and expansions that our organization has done, and that will benefit B County. So, our service hours have expanded from Monday to Friday, from 5:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So, now we can serve general public transportation within those hours. It was originally from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. So, we've extended three hours each way. So, anyone that needs transportation to work, or just to start running the morning errands, or doctor's appointments, we are here for them. So, that's our expanded hours. We have also expanded urban day trips. So, now we can take individuals, not just for medical, but for personal needs into Victoria. We're doing it twice a month, the second and fourth Thursday of the month. All we request is that they call our reservationist two weeks in advance, and then we can get them scheduled on that trip to Victoria. And those trips can go between 5:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So, whenever they need to go, between those two times, we can take them. So, we have launched a new program in two zones. It just started in the middle of December, and it's called Real Flash. So, our Real Flash program has started in Alice and Rockport. Those are our kind of like beta zones. It is like an Uber-esque service, so individuals can call us, no reservations, same-day travel, pick them up within 30 minutes, get them to their destination for only two, within 30 minutes, for only $2 each way. So, we have some good news. We have received funding to bring that to B County. So, we should, we're aiming for after March, but we do have the funding to bring Real Flash here to B County. So, individuals, we will call us same-day, within the B zone. We'll get more confirmation of how big the zone's gonna be. And so, individuals, we will be picked up within 30 minutes, taken where they need to go, when they're ready, give us a call, and then we'll pick them within 30 minutes as well. So, that is our big news. So, that would be college students, just individuals that say they ran out of milk, and they need to go to H.B. They no longer have to call 24 hours in advance to make their ride with us, it'll be same-day travel. So, yeah. And if you know anyone that needs help with transportation, we are here to help them. All they have to do is call our office at 361-668-3158, and then we'll be able to take care of them there. If anyone needs help getting travel training, or how to use our system, they can call and ask for mobility management, and I myself, Crystal, or my supervisor, Pam Garza, will be able to help them as well. So, good things coming to B County, and I'll keep y'all updated on what our zones will be, and like the official start date of when the flash service will be coming to B County. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Gonzalez.
And Judge, if we could go back to item five, and I can add to that with Commissioner's comments?
Are there any other members of the public who wish to address Commissioner's Court?
Yeah, come on forward, Sheriff.
Yes. Come on, come back.
Commissioners, Jeff Moore.
Welcome, Sheriff.
Good morning. I'm on the... I'd like to introduce a few new members to the B County Sheriff's Office, just so that you could put a name to the face, and when you see these guys out in public, you can talk to them, and you know who they are. First of all, I would like to introduce our Chief Deputy, Russell Curt. Russell has over 25 years of law enforcement experience. He worked as an investigator with the San Patricio County District Attorney's Office, where he was assigned to the tri-county drug task force, where he also was a district commander there. The chief then worked several years with the San Patricio County Sheriff's Office, retiring as a lieutenant with the Criminal Investigative Division. He then started his own business as a home inspector, and some of y'all might have seen him around B County doing inspections on homes. So, thank you, Russell, for coming on board. Also, jail captain, Lee Castro Bailey. Captain has worked as a jail correctional officer, moving up to a supervisory position with the Wilson County Jail there. Captain Bailey also worked with the Texas Jail Commission, where she conducted inspections and high-profile investigations in jails around the state of Texas. Bailey's last appointment was municipal court judge in Kennedy before taking on this new role. Thank you, Captain. Also, we have Criminal Investigative Division, Jamie Pilfer. Mr. Pilfer has over 24 years of law enforcement experience. He retired from Corpus Christi PD, where he worked in traffic, narcotics, and C and B enforcement. Jamie also worked with Homeland Security as a task force officer. He was also a patrol officer in Rockport before taking on his new role as a criminal investigator in with the B County Sheriff's Office. Thanks, Jamie. We also have Josh Olivades, CID investigator. He's continued to add years to his law enforcement career. Josh worked in corrections for five years, and has 15 years of law enforcement experience. His last job was chief investigator with the Wilson County Attorney's Office in Florida. Thanks, Josh. I just wanted to make this introduction so y'all would recognize these people when y'all see them out, and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Sheriff, and welcome to Captain Bailey. Was it, is it Captain Pilfer?
Yeah.
Captain Pilfer?
Sergeant.
Sergeant, sorry. Apologies. And, yeah, Josh, are you sergeant as well? And Chief Curt, welcome to all of y'all, thank y'all for being here this morning. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address Commissioner's Court at this time? Hearing none, I'm gonna recall Agenda Item Number Five, Commissioner's Court, opening remarks. Commissioner DeWitt, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Judge, I appreciate it. I'd like to add to Ms. Gonzalez's comments, just to reiterate some of the things she said. This is for inside the city in Bville, and it's gonna really benefit your dialysis patients. They're changing the hours from 5:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. pretty soon. That's a good thing. It's gonna be like Uber, you just call them to come pick you up. Right now, you have to make a reservation, and I'm gonna repeat that phone number a couple of times during my talk. The number is 361-668-3158. I encourage folks to call them, that's their job, that's what they do. We give them money every year, they get federal money, they get state money, that's what they do, and they do an excellent job of it. Since they took over transportation in B County, I have not had one complaint, and used to it with several a week from the previous administration. To add to that, I just told Mr. Martín Arales, if you will recall, Commissioners, some time ago, they spoke to us about some property that they could put a transportation center on in B County. Got an update from him, basically, that is in the works. They're having to do what's called a category exclusion. In other words, they have to go in the neighborhoods and say, "Okay, we're thinking about putting this over here, what do you think?" What's really helping them a lot, the current facility is right across the street from where the new facility is proposed. So, they're going through this like warm butter, it's going real quick. They anticipate it's going to keep going through, they'll be coming to us, they say, about March with some proposals. Now, remember, they asked us to come up with some money to do all these studies, and we said, "We don't have any money." Well, they miraculously found some money to do them. And they have money for the specs, the bids, they're working with Tech Top, they're discussing the, everything with Tech Top right now. They will come to us formally, once that gets further along, for exactly how the transfer of the property will work. So, we committed to them, that we're holding it for them, that's in the works. That'll happen over again, I promised I'd say it again, 361-668-3158. That is Real, that's the public transportation operation out of Alice, Texas. They have a base here in Bville, it's gonna be expanded quite a bit, once we get this new transportation center in, it's gonna be exciting for everybody. But the thing that I have to appreciate, they went on their own to do this, to move their hours to 5:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., which is gonna help a lot of people get to those doctor's appointments, get to their dialysis appointments, and that's our plan. So, give them a call, that's what they do, and Ms. Gonzalez, thank you for being here, ma'am. Judge, that's what I answered.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You have any questions for me?
I need anything else, anybody else wants to jump in? And if I'm a backup five, this is it. All right. You're welcome. That was all great information, and thank you again, Ms. Gonzalez, for Sheriff, for coming in this morning and addressing Commissioner's Court. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, the following items are of an administrative nature. Commissioner's Court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one, but without being discussed separately unless requested by a Commissioner or County Judge. Before I hear a motion to approve, I want to pull Agenda Item Seven, C, and we'll consider it separately. This is, Agenda Item Seven, C, is line item transfers. It's just a carport situation, so there's nothing to be worried about, but we can discuss that in a moment. Are there any other agenda items that any Commissioner wishes to pull from? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve, subject to Seven, C, being pulled.
Need to approve, second, Seven, C.
Second. Oh, a motion in a second, any further discussion?
Yes, sir. I'd also like to pull the Donna Starries, because that also goes with the Agenda Item Number Sixteen.
Okay.
And that's the LIT that you're pulling.
Yes. Well, I saw at least that one has language, subject to approval, so I was okay with leaving that one in. It's the line item transfer one that I had a little bit of a problem with approving before we even considered whether or not we were going to approve the changes.
Yes, and that employee is included in that.
Okay, so, Seven, G, subpart nine.
And ten.
And ten. Do you have it?
I will change my motion to also include G nine and tens in that holdout. I'll amend my second.
Thank you, guys. Y'all make this too easy on us, and I greatly appreciate it, thank you. Miss Kent, too, for pulling that as well. Okay, we have a motion in a second, except for those three sub-agenda items. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. I will recall Agenda Item Number Seven for the subparts that we pulled later on in the agenda, but again, this is just, there's no other way to do it, and so, it's not an issue at first, it's, I mean... Moving on, discussing, consider action on the following items. I'm going to jump all the way down the list to Agenda Item Number Twenty-three, and bring it up out of order, and then we'll go back into our regular order. So, Agenda Item Number Three, approve award of RFP 24-25-001 road bridge paving material to begin January 13, 2025. I have a motion to approve, and a second. Any further discussion?
Who is the bidder, and what is the not?
Who is the bidder, and what is the, I don't have it. I know they have it in here.
I think it's the one that they've been using up for a long time.
And we do have, we do have road bridge.
Vulcan, yeah. That's the one y'all were maybe wouldn't use quite.
Is it a flat number, or is it just a...
The inspection is attached.
Yeah, it's just different costs. They won't leave us stuck without material in the hot seat? Okay.
That's good.
Yes, there's several...
It's who we've been using, and we're comfortable with that.
Yes, that's their recommendation.
Not a lot of options out there, are there? So, Vulcan has a good year, but not too good on the backs of B County citizens. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, guys. If y'all need to be excused, you may do so at this time before I call the next agenda Thank you, Ray. Okay, Agenda Item Number Eight, I'll make this as quick as possible. Agenda Item Number Eight, approve revisions to updated expo rental agreement. We had a situation come up at the end of last year, where we had a very large event that had been planned for months, month and a half, and I'm not assigning any blame, I'm not complaining, I'm just acknowledging and recognizing that we do have issues with our contractual agreement, and from the county's perspective, we're putting ourselves in a weird situation with the contract the way that it was drafted. So, that's my CYA, I don't want, I've got Sheriff and all of his top lieutenants here this morning, this isn't, this isn't anything that should change. I don't believe it will change how the security for the expo actually goes, but let me just get into it, and hopefully it makes sense what I'm talking about. So, when somebody leases or rents the expo, they agree to a written contract, which includes the requirement that they pay money in the form of rent, that they pay a deposit, and they actually sign a written agreement. The written agreement contains obligations on both the county's side of the ledger and on the lessy's side of the ledger. With respect to security, especially at events that serve alcohol, the way the contract is currently drafted requires that the lessor, the tenant, contract for security through the B County Sheriff's Office of B County T-Close certified law enforcement officers. We had a situation, we had a huge concert for Bville. The huge concert had a very, you know, celebratory period of time, and unfortunately, no B County law enforcement officers wanted to work that day, they wanted to celebrate. And that happens. We've got a small, it's a relatively small department, 99% of the time, this isn't an issue, but it does come up. And it raised the question, as I was talking with our expo, what's your title? Promotional Director of the Expo, I started looking at it and thinking at it from the point of view of, what happens if B County can't provide security? We've got a promoter in this particular instance who has expended thousands of his own dollars, he's entered into written contracts with bands that he's committed to pay thousands of dollars to show up, and on the day of the event, he doesn't have security. So, what position does that put me and the county in? Well, that gives me the option, do I just waive security for a big celebratory event, a concert where tons of strangers are gonna be drinking with each other, and celebrating, and stepping on each other's toes, and spilling beer on each other, and maybe getting into arguments over pretty young ladies and handsome young men? Or, am I going to shut it down and not let them have that, and risk the exposure of some form of liability to the county for having an obligation that's tied to us having the obligation to provide security to the tenant? Easiest solution to me, from a contractual standpoint, is let's make sure that we keep that responsibility, that obligation, on the tenant, not on us. And so, you'll see on the changes, and how, under House and Ground rules, paragraph D, I'm proposing we change that provision to remove the requirement that... D, um, I'm proposing we change that provision, uh, to remove the requirement that, that be uniformed B County T-Close Certified Law Enforcement Officers. Um, however, the way the changes read still prioritizes our B County Sheriff's Office, if this is something Sheriff that you want to continue to do, usually, traditionally it hasn't been, but it's totally, totally within your purview, um, where the lessy will first be required to, uh, seek security, uh, officers through, uh, B County Sheriff's Office, but if they can't provide it, that responsibility to provide security officer still exists, and it's still on the tenant's shoulders, it's not on the county, it's not on the Sheriff's Office, uh, shoulders. So, I've removed B County from the first line, so a number of uniformed T-Close Certified Law Enforcement Officers, um, I've removed the sentence, the, the second to last sentence that says, "Security officers can be scheduled through the B County Sheriff's Department", and changed that to say, "Lessy shall first attempt to schedule security officers through the B County Sheriff's Office, semicolon, if the B County Sheriff's Office cannot provide the required security needs, lessy shall locate and secure T-Close Certified Law Enforcement Officers from any available resources." That's the only change. There were a few other minor, uh, we'd call them scripters' corrections, while we, in general, can you summarize them real quick for Commissioner's Court? I think there was a couple remaining issues.
We changed it from, that they can no longer be served three years and a half.
Okay. So we're shortening the reservation timeframe, we had looked at some. Um, and for our annual events, I know the trail riders in the back are here, we love that you guys come through. Through last year. And then we can talk about charging you more. Uh, but, uh...
Judge, I'm so sorry, I just wanted to mention also, we also...
And that's, that's a really good point, I didn't mean to cut you off, Wally. We go, aren't we, out of the woods, we're good now, right?
Yeah, I pulled the numbers this morning, and we're still sitting pretty high on the KBDI number, so, I mean, we want to maybe do a thirty-day or sixty-day, just to get us through it, but it's still dry.
Judge, if I could, I know the north end of county, my place is between Pettis and Mineral, we had right at two inches there. I think we got more, I don't know what the south end got, what did y'all get, we had an inch and a half? I know that I'm getting several calls from ranchers, and we're going to burn some stuff. Judge, it might be one of those things, where we could bring this back in thirty days, like you said. We've got moisture on the ground right now. What do you think?
You mean, not passing it?
Not passing it for thirty days, and let them know, hey, we're out of a burn bin, if you want to burn. Sheriff, what, it's going to hit you guys, what do you think, sir?
Maybe a thirty-day, where they can burn thirty days, and check them.
Have we heard anything from any of the fire chiefs?
I have not. I know, uh, the only two, the only two were just, uh, Chief Burris and Kirk from Beeville. But, I mean, we did get a substantial, well, compared to what we had got. So I'm not opposed to, to giving a little bit of a timeframe, we can reevaluate, if it, if it changes in the next, by the next Commissioner's Court, we can bring it back before you begin, but I don't see it being a mission.
The only thing is, is just make sure they call it into the Sheriff's Office, I'm, I got a brush pile that I'm running, at this location, just to give a heads up.
Yeah, we had several calls from South D.C. as well, too, that I pass it by, uh, Ron here to get through.
Ryan, we've got, you know, another half hour at least in our meeting, would you do me a favor, and just step outside, and, uh, call, I mean, Skidmore Fire Chief, Pettis Fire Chief, Tyne, and, just, just give a call to the, to the rural folks, and, and see if they're okay with that concept, that, because they're the ones that are really going to be tearing apart and erupting, we do have some grass fires, so I'd love to hear, thank you, sir. And so, we are going to, uh, I'm going to, we're not doing this right now on this. Did we have a motion in a second already? No, we didn't. Okay, good. So, I'm just going to, uh, move on from this one, and I will recall it in a later moment in time, this, uh, almost at this afternoon. All right, I'm trying to get to the, the Sheriff's Office has some agenda items, I'm trying my best to get to them, um, so I can, because I know they've got better things to do than listen to me talk, although I know it's very entertaining. Uh, just kidding. Do you want me to, I'm going to move them a little over, Agenda Item Number Fourteen, because I think this one might be, uh...
I would, seventeen.
Seventeen. Right, yeah, I got that, too. Um, but, that's sixteen and seventeen, I still have fifteen. Uh, so Agenda Item Number Fifteen, now?
I would.
No, 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 I understand all that. Um, okay, I got the agenda. Agenda Item Number Fifteen, approve CoLogic Annual Agreement for the Sheriff's Office. Um, I just want to make sure we're all, and thank you all for being here, I really appreciate it. Um, so, uh, this CoLogic Annual Agreement was executed by me, uh, with the intent to bring it before Commissioner's Court to ask for forgiveness, because at the time, uh, when the Sheriff's Office reached out to me, it was something that we needed to get done, and we couldn't wait until we had an ex, uh, meeting. Um, and I was informed this morning that maybe that circumstances has changed, that we don't want this agreement, that it's not being presented to CoLogic, that y'all have a different solution in mind, or something?
No, we don't want it.
Okay. Anything else?
Do we need to disapprove?
But that it can be considered, we didn't give it to them, so I think we have to forgive them. So when, like, you signed it, and you backed it to Logic, so I don't forgive them, renew them after that, but...
We don't want it to be renewed after the fifteenth.
Fifteenth of January?
Of January.
Okay.
Yeah.
We just, we needed the month-to-month.
That's why I wanted them here, because I don't understand what we're, so is it a month-to-month contract?
So, so it's a month-to-month contract, we need, our, it ended in October, I believe, and so we needed a month-to-month to cover us from October to November fifteenth, November, well, I guess there's another month, um, until, the contract that we currently have is until January twenty-fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. We want to cut it off then, and we don't want to move forward with it anymore, after that.
Do we have to give them any kind of thirty days?
Yeah, it's our notice provision, yeah. Is it thirty days, or is it?
What kind of notice do we have to give?
Well, it's my understanding, we've been month-to-month with them, to begin with, so...
We were on annual, and then they wanted to move us to a month-to-month.
Well, annual, but month-to-month lately, since the original contract expired, so we'll touch base with them, but I think lack of payment will, will cut it off.
And you have someone you've moved it up to thirty?
Yes.
Okay. We're working with our E4 software to, to, to take over, um, the attributes that we're getting from.
Okay, and that's how we even have to do here today, on that?
No.
Okay. So this is the situation. Um, there was a, uh, extraordinary reason to sign the contract. The contract's been delivered to, uh, the other party, the other party hasn't returned the signed contract, but I signed the contract because I was going to show up today and say, "I'm sorry, guys, the Sheriff's Office needed it, and I wanted to support them, and so I made the executive decision, and now I'm asking for your forgiveness." As it stands right now, I believe, and it's my position, that, um, y'all need to, regardless of the Sheriff's, uh, Office intent, starting now, or at any point in time in the future, what I'm asking you, and what I'm looking for a vote on, is either to say, "Okay, yeah, uh, we ratified what you did," or, "No, we didn't ratify what you did." And if you do vote that way, then it's fine, I just want y'all to understand that, and all our departments to understand, I'm not going to sign anything ever again, on a special basis, because I won't, I don't want to show up today and have y'all reject the contract that I approved, on the basis that I thought I felt comfortable committing this to, does that make sense?
Here's the balance. We can approve it through January the fifteenth? Periods?
Well, I, we can't, because I've already signed, the contract is drafted, we can't add new terms to it, we sent it to the other party, whatever the Sheriff's Office wants to do with this contract, they can't.
It's not, it was on a month-to-month basis, when you signed?
No, I, I don't know.
It was.
It's an amendment, it doesn't, it doesn't include specific terms. So what I'm asking, and I'll make the motion, make it easy on everybody, uh, make the motion that we ratify the execution of the CoLogic Annual, uh, Agreement Amendment that was executed by, uh, myself on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, knowing that y'all are going to move on from that, but that you may have other provisions in the terms and conditions of the actual contract, that you need to look at to see what continuing obligations or additional financial restrictions you have, uh, with respect to that.
Next petition?
No. Thank you.
Would you sign your point?
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
No.
All right. Cool. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you all for, uh, good luck dealing with it.
So, so, to understand what we did, we approved the contract, and as soon as we can, we're going to say, "Okay, it's month-to-month, we're through."
That's right. And if it needs to come from me, get with us immediately, so that we can sign it and get that notice in the mail.
We have to pay him another month.
Right on the agenda.
You know, we, we, we don't want to get a vibe, do we?
Is that right? I hope not. I hope, uh, you know, the new entity, we look forward to a contract with the new entity. There you go. Uh, but think about these issues, you know, it happens, it's part of it. Uh, moving on, Agenda Item Number Seventeen. I got it, I got it. I got notes on my agenda, all five of y'all reminded me, I think Stacy reminded me, and Sharon, handy boat jumping out of their seats, or much. You might, you might think that you hear a, a tinge of irritation, but you don't. I'm so grateful that I have, uh, that, and everybody's paying attention, and wanting to make sure we do the things.
It's early here.
I know, I really do, I really do appreciate it, so it's not, it's not negative. We got you, Judge. I appreciate it, thank you. Please keep, keep staying vigilant, because, uh, we'll do this again in two weeks. Agenda Item Number Seventeen, approve B County Resolution for the Sheriff's Office fourteen-day work period. Sheriff Agita, you're here, do y'all have any, oh, Chief Kirk is going to speak, come on down. We all know, we all know you now, uh, and, uh, and we're, we're going to be seeing a lot of you, Chief, and I'm looking forward to that. If you would, just, uh, try to always remember, whenever you stand up in the audience or come to the lectern, just for our record, just identify yourself and say, you know, "Chief of the, of B County Sheriff's Office," and then jump into, to what you're going to tell us, because our written record is the important one, the video one is just for convenience for the audience.
My name's Russell Kirk, I'm the Chief Deputy Sheriff for the B County Sheriff's Office, under Sheriff Randy Hury. Thank you, guys, for, for allowing me to speak here. Um, basically, there were seventeen addresses, the first thing that the Sheriff and I have wanted to try to tackle, uh, when we came into office, when he came into office, is basically the overtime situation, it's a, it's extensive overtime that the county spent in the jail, and as well as, uh, the twenty-four-seven coverage from the Sheriff's Department. So what we, what we've come up with is a plan, um, to follow, uh, FLSA two oh seven eight for law enforcement, um, to allow the, the Sheriff's Patrol and the jail to work twelve-hour rotating shifts. Um, what that, what that will do, um, we're hoping, and our analytics tell us so, um, will, will allow two, at least two to three, at least two, and hopefully three deputies twenty-four-seven. We don't have that capability right now, a lot of times we're running, running one deputy, and sometimes no deputy, from what I understand in the past, uh, for a few hours in the middle of the night. So that will alleviate that problem, uh, in the interest of public safety, as well as the jail overtime, uh, which has been a priority for the Sheriff and I, first thirteen days in office, so.
Can we literally start this?
Uh, next pay period, January twenty-sixth is what we're looking at.
We have our HR director.
I meant, what do you think?
How many, so, the attorney, uh, Judge, we've thought over this, we've had a few meetings with the Sheriff's Department, um, we've worked on updating the timesheet to accommodate this, uh, the twenty-sixth is fine, we just wanted to make sure it was starting at the beginning of pay period, not somewhere, you know, to create all kinds of mess.
That will also allow, one thing I didn't mention, uh, in addition to the twenty-four-seven coverage, it'll allow, allow our deputies to have every other weekend off, if you're on a rotating basis, so that's a more ability as well.
Second? I have a motion, and a unanimous second. Uh, Chief Kirk, I, I think I told, uh, Sheriff Agita this as well, um, you know, for a long time, we've been looking at this issue, and, uh, the response has always been, there is no solution, this is just what it is, and, and so, if, if nothing else, and I believe I speak on behalf of all commissioners, you guys have our support to try to tackle this issue for two reasons. One, full-time coverage and support staff at the jail, so you're keeping your citizens safe, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and you're keeping, uh, the jail in a corner, like you said, they're already safe, uh, you're taking good care of our guests, um, without... That's right. And you're improving our, our budgetary issue, which this is a very large budgetary issue, so if it doesn't work, as soon as y'all figure it out, it doesn't work, let us know, come back, we're, I'm, I'm very open to y'all trying as many different novel and unique ways to solve these issues, so thank you, guys, for putting the effort in, and looking forward to seeing how it goes. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Moving on, Agenda Item Number Sixteen, approve to change an unused Cook jailer position in Department five six six, to a needed Sergeant Patrol Deputy position in Department five six five. Sheriff, Chief, anything to add on this?
I think this will be the sheriff.
Well played.
Randy Hury, B County Sheriff. Uh, yes, Judge, we're asking, um, for an approval to change the unused Cook jailer position that was in the jail, in Department five six six, to a needed Sergeant Patrol Deputy position in Department five six five. Uh, that, talking about the twenty-four-hour coverage, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, uh, you would need four teams to do that, and right now, we only have three patrol sergeants, so this would give us the extra patrol sergeant, so where we could have a supervisor on each shift. So when two shifts are working the day nine, there's other two shifts that are off. So, with this, this would give us the extra patrol sergeant to have a supervisor on every shift. Uh, that's what we're asking for, and we're asking that, that, uh, we request that this position, uh, would be fully funded in the two thousand twenty-six budget. Of course, we had a bunch of help with the Auditor's Office, tremendous help, they helped us through this whole process, Hyman with HR, we've had several meetings, um, and Ms. Cantu has helped us out, find a, a little bit of money in that position that hadn't been used for two years in the, in the jail. Is that right?
Yes, yes, sir. So...
Well done, Sheriff.
Very, very good, Sheriff. So if you see the spreadsheet that was attached to the agenda item, it shows, um, the unused position and what, um, the Sheriff is proposing, um, to complete fiscal year twenty-five, there is enough money in that unused position to cover. Come fiscal year twenty-six, the Sheriff's Office, of course, will come and ask the court, um, how to fund the, uh, the rest to go, uh, to fund a fourth year, come twenty twenty-six. So we'll discuss that at a later time, uh, but this, this spreadsheet does show you the, the numbers and, um, what we're looking at, uh, to fund, uh, come twenty twenty-six, just to see.
Do they have a LIT on that?
Well, the LIT is for fiscal year twenty, uh, twenty-five, to move those, uh, five six six monies to five six five.
Judge, I'll make the motion to approve, and, uh, well, well done, Sheriff.
Second?
Second, the comments?
I've got a motion, in a couple seconds, Commissioner LeBottes, you have the floor.
Yeah, I'd just like to, uh, recognize Madam Auditor here for explaining this process to me, and educating me a little bit better on how kind of government really works, as far as moving money around. So she did this later on Friday afternoon, and I really appreciate that, to gain a better understanding and not waste the court's time, and we have the new decision, so, thank you.
It's good to get a better idea of where all this is, where all the council...
Yes, yes, yes.
No secrets, girl.
Sorry, just, just a first of the year.
So, yes, thank you. Thank you.
In addition, Tommy, I know y'all are aware of the state's requirements on, on budget. We start ours March, April, that's when we're starting.
To May.
May, that's when we start the budget. That'll come up real quick.
Yes, yes.
We don't have any extra money, sorry. Stay moving on.
But, but the sheriff's office does, with SB 22, there are additional talks, you know, and additional buckets, uh, you know, that can be discussed at that time, so.
We have our, we're really looking forward to see if nothing can work out this, and now they're gonna. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Um, agenda item number... Yeah, um, actually, I pulled, let's just go ahead and, are there any other sheriff's office?
I think you have to go back to the 17C.
I'm doing that right now, yeah.
Other than that, that's it.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna recall agenda item number seven for our, uh, the, uh, components of our consent agenda that we pulled from the consent agenda. For the record, they are, uh, paragraphs, our section 7C and 7G, subparts nine and 10. Um, it looks like we've approved, uh, the two contingent, uh, agenda items that these consent agenda items relate to. I'd entertain a motion to approve, uh, the pulled items from the consent agenda at this time.
Would you approve?
Second? I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you all for your presence here this morning, um, look forward to seeing the continued growth. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you to the commissioners for accommodating and jumping all around this agenda today. Agenda item number 14, approve request for qualifications to solicit an engineer to help prepare a conditions assessment, master plan of drawings, and grant administration for the 2026 Texas Historical Commission grant round 14 funding of courthouse repairs. Commissioner Fadilla, this is your agenda item, you have the floor.
Thank you. Judge, commissioners, this is a, uh, priority for, for trying to solicit to get back on the schedule for the courthouse repairs. As you know, years, years back, I'm not gonna mention which administration it was, but they attempted, they started, and then there was a change in, uh, judges, and then it just ceased, it stopped. There was an unused pool of money, it was still left there, and since then, uh, they've, they've added, what?
Four million.
They've added four more million to the ones that had started this project. We can draw from that pot, we can still draw from that pot. And then they added four more million, so if it's feasible, and we don't have to put a lot of money from our resources, I would like to pursue it and try to move forward with, you know, Jennifer's out there. Is this gonna be a sealed bid?
Uh, yes, yes, yes.
But they do have to qualify under the Texas Historical Commission, uh, group, so not just anybody can, can, can bid. They've gotta be, uh, like, on their approved vendor list that does historical restoration.
It's customary tales for other counties considering, uh, taking one from the Texas State Historical Commission in exchange for a historic easement on their building.
The string is long.
That's right.
Yeah, and they do, they, they control a lot, you gotta, you know, can I please, can I do this, can I do that? And they, they control all the purse strings.
Well, let me, let me, let me jump in.
And I will do the statute, the clock, and the course.
I have to appreciate Commissioner Fadilla, he's our construction renovation expert.
He is.
And he just thought he was almost finished up with his project, now he's taking on the largest project we have in the county of this courthouse. My hat's off to you, sir, and I'm not saying that position, I mean that, because this is not easy.
I didn't thought it was over.
Because he could just, he could, this is easy, not said a word, just slinked off in a corner. He jumped right in there, said, I'll do it.
No, it's, we can't tell you how much I appreciate it. And so any county employees or community citizens that have any great ideas, suggestions? Please direct them to Commissioner.
Here's the one suggestion I've heard thousands of times, the clock face should be white, not black. So when we're dealing with them, I want them to go back, because what they normally do, I have little experience with these historical people, they'll find a photograph somewhere, ah, this is where it was. I do not think in 1902 or whenever this thing was built, there was enough light to light a black face at night. He was white, but let's talk to them about that, make it white instead of black, seriously, I mean that sincerely.
We, we need somebody to come in and say the numbers were off on that?
Oh, I, I, we have had all kinds of, of stories. But also, for the court, for the commissioners and justices, the part of the agreement on this, or part of it entails is the air conditioning system and the boiler system is also included in part of this deal here. So they'll go and look at the actuators, they'll look at the, the pumps or whatever, all of that is included in this. Am I right, Denny? That's what the, uh, one guy from, uh, the referio?
Yes.
Kasamoto or?
Kumatsu.
Kumatsu.
Kumatsu, engineer.
And they're certified, uh, historical restoration, they, they're doing the referio courthouse at this time. So they came by to give us a little bit of advice, and they walked around, and showed us, and gave us some, some things to do, some tidbits, tidbits, so.
Do you know if ultimately we're gonna have a grant administrator, or we're gonna handle the administration of?
They actually, there, um, there are several engineering firms who do the grant administration within the firm itself, so that's what we're soliciting for as well.
All inclusive.
Will they present in their bid their proposed formal agreements?
We can request.
Request that.
Okay.
And give us a little bit more than three days' notice to look at a complex contract, and then we end up without making names in situations where we're kind of openly adverse to our, uh, selected individuals.
Absolutely.
Yeah, see if maybe we can improve that.
No, that, and that's, that's what I'm asking for, permission for the RAP to move on.
Six months.
That's not my.
I'll second that move. Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. I just make sure that you fix the large courtroom and the small courtroom. Yeah, so everything else. And maybe make the district clerks seem like safe for the employees and.
And use your hard hats and wear your.
It's like going into our own natural bridge cavalcades. All right, all right. Okay, let me go, are we ready to go back to the burn ban? Uh, that was agenda item number 13, I'm gonna go ahead and recall it. Mr. Garz, I don't, what, what do we hear?
Out of the eight fire chiefs, four said no, three said yes, and one is yet to respond.
What did they say no to?
To lifting it.
Okay.
Um, their concern is that there's still a lot of fuel. Um, I called Blanconia's fire chief, he said it's pretty dry still in Blanconia, even though they got that little bit of rain, it was still dry. Poney said that they were okay with lifting it if the court wants to do so, but have the implementation, if we needed to do it, maybe call in an emergency meeting to be able to implement one back. Those are only caveats.
I mean, county burn ban, I, I'd say, I'd say we approve it, and then let's go and put a feeler on the next agenda, and just get it on the agenda for us to consider it then, I don't wanna... And also, our, our ranchers that, that are following you guys, uh, you guys being commissioners, apologies for the informality of the comment, um, uh, our ranchers and farmers that are following you, please make sure that they understand, one, they can get a full copy of our actual burn ban, uh, online, and two, there still is a mechanism for conducting ban, uh, burns during a burn ban. The process is all laid out, uh, in, in the agreement itself, and I, I know some of our larger, uh, ranchers, they do all of that, and most of them do it anyway, um, so, um, any further comments, discussion?
We took like two, Judge, we got, uh, Wednesday of this week, and then next week, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, all good changes of the rain.
Right, and then we'll be back two weeks after that.
Right.
Have we done this before, where we approved a burn ban, and then we, uh, reserved the right in the sheriff, in the sheriff, in the, in the judge to?
Well, you can take it off yourself.
At any point.
At any point. That, that's your.
But we've done it, we've done that.
We've done that a few years back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You, you had that, or, we did that years ago.
If it were unanimous, I feel, or if it was just one that said no, but it's kind of split, because it's split, I think tie goes to safety.
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the burn ban, outdoor burn ban, effective, what?
Today.
Today.
I have a motion and a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I do, yes.
Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Uh, thank you, I appreciate that, thank you, Ryan, and I hope when you tell the, uh, when you talk to the chiefs, please express our appreciation to them for, I, I know nobody really wants to make this call or decision, but I really appreciate your insight.
You can take it off.
Okay, now we're on agenda item number 18, approve annual financial statement for the North B County Emergency Services District Number Two. Report looks pretty good, their reserves look good, um, I've really appreciated them submitting this. Any further discussion, any, anybody wants to talk about it?
It's in my precinct, and I've, I've looked over the numbers, and you're right, the other do approve, and I appreciate the, uh, sending that in. Ms. Andrews does a good job, I'm making the motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve, I have a second. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception, thank you, gentlemen. Um, agenda item number 19, approve renewal agreement for Vanguard Management and Imaging System between COFIL, G O V O S, and B County Clerk's Office.
There's Teresa.
Hey, you stepped out right at the one.
You're right on one.
Yes, I was waiting for Ms. Michelle, uh, she was on her way, but, um, were we able to get that conference call with Marina? Erica is good, it's just the, the date of the renewal contract with Marina. Arnaud is working on it, he didn't get enough data, so it's Friday.
What's the, oh, so we don't have a, you don't have an agreement to submit that's already been signed?
There is one, uh, I gave Commissioner.
It's not signed, though.
But I thought it was, it happened too, when they got, they don't get a agenda.
Okay, and, and just so commissioners understand, we've kind of gotten into this habit where our department heads and elected officials will submit a contract for us to consider, uh, and then we'll approve it, and then I'll sign it, and then we'll be sending it back to them, or back to the vendor to try to get a signature. And, um, so it, it really came to light in the latter part of the fourth quarter of last year. We had some folks looking for certain contracts, they couldn't find them, we didn't know where they are. Uh, you know, it, it takes time away from our auditor's department, takes time away from our county clerk's department, takes time away from the, uh, judge's office, uh, in just trying to round these things up. So we've implemented a new policy where if you're gonna have an agenda item where you're asking for us to, uh, approve a contract, it needs to be executed by the entity that's submitting the, the contract, so that when we sign it, we immediately have it with the county clerk's office, because the county clerk is the repository of all, uh, legal documents in the county, and they currently are missing a lot of those legal documents in the county. And, and that doesn't impact if we have changes to the contract and we need to address it, it's just 99% of what we do, uh, is approving the good work that our, our team has already done, and so just trying to streamline that process a little bit. Any further discussion? Did I get that right?
Yes.
This is a lot of money, is this?
I, I do want to say that there's an LIT, I already, um, emailed, uh, the county clerk to let her know that next commissioner's court, she won't have to, uh, present an LIT to move money from her supply budget into the signing, because it is over about $4,000.
Yeah, and let's, let's talk about the actual substance of the agreement, because what I'm talking about is, is something different.
Is this, is this what y'all want, is this what you need, what we presented, or can you, can you address it?
Well, that's what's in place, and was in place, and I know that the fees did go up, uh, we've gone over it with Ben as well, and.
I've set a contact.
Yeah, and Marina would be able to sign up more with.
I mean, we're talking $264,000 contract overall.
What was the last contract value?
And this, uh, this, um, company acquired an old, or the prior.
COFIL.
They, they acquired clients and standing.
Just for your information, I was one of those, I was trying to go get a contract that I worked thanks for, we were sharing the time, right, so.
And can you, can you just, in a sentence or two, tell the court exactly what this is for?
It's for the county clerk to, uh, do all the, any kind of, it's our cash app, and it's our indexing, it's.
Okay, records management, basically, and this is the, the backbone of your records management right here. It's something we have to have.
Where we gotta be seen to, I mean, we have work for others, but it's too late, but again.
No, it's just, it's the one that they, uh, that they've gone to, I mean, this is acquired, they're acquired.
What kind of revenue did we see from having these documents available for sale online?
It's reduced revenue, um, because their fund, the 14 is, uh, their revenues have dropped dramatically.
Because usually they had to come in and make the copy and pay for the copy, now they don't do that.
They, they have dropped in revenue, I know that.
Well, it's online, and that's part of it, too. They have to pay online revenue.
Yeah, they pay online.
That's it. And we did get a little portion of it, but it's not much.
I was thinking, say, who gets the money when they're paying online?
We only get, I don't know the percentage, that's something that, uh, I, when the face, say, I work on it, when the cell is part of it, and.
Does this company gets the money when they're paying online?
No, we don't, I think there's a fee, and probably, probably get seven of it, right, but sure, they get more than we. For patents, or the credit card company, whichever, because we have to, we have to do a credit card company.
Get our documents in a format where they can be sold, and I remember, because up in the courthouse, we've got those huge shadow boxes showing an old document, a book cover, and, and I thought we were gonna be making all kinds of money, I thought that was the, the concept, is we was gonna increase, you know, the stream of revenue, because it makes it easier to. We're kind of captured, so they're holding. Who are we calling?
So the county clerk doesn't need to be here, I mean, is?
Yeah, I don't know why. I, I don't know why Michelle's not here.
She was gonna explain, this lady, Marina was gonna explain.
Explain what? Yeah, I, there's no reason not to, we might as well spend a few minutes, we can talk to her and see what she has to say. Yeah.
Negotiate more money for county, to send a contract.
Are there changes? Are y'all still negotiating?
The money?
We're negotiating.
Even the, the, the prices are, uh, heavy. And the previous guy, Ken, said that he would negotiate, you know, but he left, and then I'm with Marina's attorney.
Okay, hang on, listen, this is what we're gonna do on this agenda item, we're not gonna sit here and try to figure out from the person who's trying to sell me something, uh, let them answer all the questions. The questions that I have, uh, Terry, are, what is it you guys want to do? What, uh, you know, is, is this the direction y'all wanna go, are you looking at other directions? How much more, uh, is this within your budgeted amount, uh, is it something that's gonna cause a downline transfer, either line item or budget amendment? Is there, is there a process that we should be utilizing to go through these types of renewals that, that we haven't, that we need to run through, so that when we bring it back, and I'll, I can entertain a motion to table in a few minutes, bring it back at the next agenda, uh, the commissioners will have an understanding, will be able to understand from y'all, or from the information packet, uh, included with the agenda, uh, or a summary from, from Mrs. Cantu, uh, what it is we're looking at, why it is you need it, and why you recommend that we, we approve it. Uh, at this stage, I just, I, I don't, unless we're just gonna approve it, because it's what we're gonna do.
I feel a summary needs to come from the county clerk, this is her vendor, and she's in charge of this procurement and their service, it is not mine, we, when, when it was brought to my office through email, uh, the. It is not mine, we, when, when it was brought to my office through email, there was limited information. And so I put my team on it, my procurement team on it, and there was issues, and so they were backtracking on the procurement, because of course that's number one, we have to make sure it's prepared properly. And when there was issues, that, that's what's taken so long, but this elected official needs to come in and explain.
Yeah, a couple weeks, I, it should be, all of this sounds infinitely curable, like not really that big a deal, so, let's, let's resolve, you know, put our, put our heads together and figure out a good solution.
I'll make a motion to table the comment.
I have a motion to table, I have this motion in a second, you have the floor.
The comment, I'd like for them to come back to and explain the fee structure, because it was, maybe I was the only one that thought that way. It was my understanding, we were going to get that money when they pull that stuff offline, not the company. If we're actually losing money, or not creating as much revenue as we were, maybe we need to look at that.
I'd like to add to that, also, it would be great to understand how can we gain access to this information without having to go through a lot of the people that's taking their valuable time to support one question. Do we have access to these records, that we could do a query?
In our mix, the, 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 put all this information back on there, and I'm not going to hang on to it.
So just for clarification, Commissioner DuWitt, your motion was to table agenda item number nineteen until the December twenty? January twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. Agenda, that was your second. Wonderful, thank you, any further discussion? We're just looking for a little bit more guidance, and we, we really need, we, we need y'all to come and be, be able to, and it's something I'm going to talk about, and I can talk about during this agenda, and maybe on this agenda, but you're going to see some changes to all of our elected officials, department heads, into how these Commissioner Courts are run, and my expectations of presence, because if it's not all buttoned, buttoned up and bow tied, there's, you know, we're dead in the water. And it's not what we want for you, because we want y'all to get everything that you're asking for, and it's not what we want for us, because we need to have a good understanding of what it is that we're agreeing to. But yeah, I would think in two weeks, you guys can get this all worked out, yes, sir.
Just, just one more, I'll, also curious, is where metadata is being maintained on all of our records, or do you get an understanding of that?
What was that?
Metadata, all the detailed information goes to records, and how we can dissort and location of the information.
And I can talk to you a little bit about what I know as far as, because CO File predates when you, when you join Commissioner's Court. But they do have some, there's an online function and search ability, but when CO File, when you're contracting with CO File, over three years, yeah, or two or three years. So we had different level, levels and different options on OCR that we wanted on the back, this is a little bit in the weeds, but there were cer- certain levels, and we did not do full OCR on all of the documents that we had. I don't believe all documents, all county clerk records are even scanned. The ones that are most commonly used were, I think deeds, deeds and other recorded instruments, but I don't even know.
Online?
Yeah, no, like, but digitally, yeah, like, take a paper document and turn it into a PDF or computer.
Everything is, except for certain, I mean, all the deeds for sure are there, and, right, are there.
Birth and death records, Commissioners Court minutes, probate minutes, there's so many, and, and it's, it's good for, for all of us to keep in mind that our county clerk's role is wildly different from our district clerk's role. Our county clerk is the repository of all of our stuff, and if you go into that vault, there are countless registers and old books of documents that they are supposed to maintain, and that's the primary purpose of the county clerk's office, so that if I needed, or if you needed a contract, you just walk into the county clerk's office, to talk to Terry, or one of the other staff members, and they're like, yeah, no big deal, and they go and find it and bring it to you. And so, I would, we definitely want to support you in that, but back to CO File, I don't believe that we could afford the whole enchilada when we contracted with them, so we have some limited functionality, and it's only a partial. And then the clerk's office still, you know, I don't know what mechanisms they have as far as organizing all the records that weren't digitally, or organizing, storing, maintaining, and keeping, say, all the records that aren't on this $264,000 a year. All good questions, all, all important, unfortunately, probably a little bit for you, sorry, Terry. But thank you for being here, I have a motion in a second to table this until our next agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception, this agenda will be brought back up in the December, but then change, you're already twenty-something. Please, agenda, let's make sure we don't forget that. Are we able to, agenda item number twenty, approve and accept the B County newly elected officials' bonds for a term from January one, twenty twenty-five to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception, you're locked in, can't get out now, thank you for your service. Agenda item number twenty-one, approve district attorney's request for permission to use the county credit card to pay for hotel in Burning Texas for BPU Region Two training. I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please indicate by saying aye. You're going to one in a time now? All opposed, motion passes without exception. Agenda item number twenty-two, approve request to dispose of obsolete, broken miscellaneous office supplies and equipment department-wide.
I'll second, but I haven't seen the list yet, I guess we're just going to do this?
Yeah, I don't know, I was wondering.
Well, this is miscellaneous items and...
Miscellaneous is a big word.
I know, it's, we can provide a list.
Chair and desk in your office?
We can provide a list if you want us to bring in.
What, what is it, just give us categories, screens, so this is the computer stuff? Keyboards that are thrown in, there's some phones without lines, that it doesn't hit.
Where do you get rid of, where, who takes it?
We have a, we have a disposal company that comes in, or who asks to come in and take it.
Because I've had people ask me, we're not getting rid of an old TV, because we don't take them at our collection station. You can't only take them, how do you get rid of a five-five inch screen TV? How do you do it?
Do you think one?
Do you think one, we just drop it off down there?
Out fifty-nine?
East, west, east, west.
That's a really good question.
Didn't have the light station up in there?
Well, we have access to a disposal company, and so, yes, we, we contract them, and they come out and pick up all of that.
Ms. Mornecks, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to make sure that they included, there is a bunch of obsolete copats that have been out twice, and now one's are another round later this year for that, so I'd like to have those included, and if they can get rid of, they've got cases, and, and okay.
Those were, those can go on a list, and you can give it to Debbie, and she'll, she'll do that on the list.
They actually did, they were gift to us, except for two from San Trisho County.
The voting.
Oh. Copats, they're obsolete.
Also included in this is the items that Craig has all over the floor in the server room of the tax office. There's a, there's a box of DVD's that is.
Obviously, whatever we have to do as far as management from, you know, regulatory purposes, let's do, and I guess maybe, and usually in your, in, in, here in, in a, the agenda items past, there's been some specific identification of what it is that, that we're getting rid of, so, but categories is okay, too, and I appreciate you, is that satisfying your query?
And, and the reason I say that, I totally trust the auditor and her folks to know exactly what these folks are doing, because they've got a big stick, and if they try to get rid of something, they should, they're popping.
A list should be.
Really, really should, because miscellaneous covers lots. I, I know what the state of Texas is, if you give me a property number, I don't care what it is, I can resurrect whatever that item is from.
Yes, and, and mostly, and these don't have property numbers on them, because that is what it was to have asked.
We could should consider doing that, and putting a tasking to auditor's office, and, oh, implementation on that's good.
We're, we're tasked with, with, our thing.
You're ready to do it, yeah, it's easy.
And yes, we, we do.
They'll do such a good job of it.
We, we have to.
This is stuff you put in the Uber, okay, here you go.
Well, there's, there, like I said, there's a lot that is not tagged, but, because those do have to.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. I want to say this meeting got derailed, and I've got to believe myself, I don't really know how, it's almost eleven AM, but I, I missed you guys. I did, that was an audible sigh. Agenda item number twenty-three, approve reward of R I P twenty-four dash twenty-five, oh wait, we did that?
We did that, yeah.
Agenda item number twenty-four, approve increase to the B County mileage rate in accordance with the twenty twenty-five IRS standard mileage rate increase.
Need to approve, we went to seventy-six?
Second. Oh, last one in the second, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda item number twenty-five, this is an interesting one for me, approve Texas opioid settlement agreements. There were no settlement agreements in our agenda, but I, I recall in December, they reached out and asked that we put this on the agenda. What's going on? Oh, we already did it? Okay, so there's nothing else?
No, I just, I just put it on there as it was.
Yeah, no, I like understanding issues, okay. So we'll pass on twenty-five, agenda item number twenty-six, Hurricane Harvey, Texas General Land Office, G L O twenty, the development block grant C D G status and project update, gentlemen?
We submitted a, a request, Jennifer submitted one here just recently, and we're waiting to get some feedback.
If I haven't heard back within the next week, I'm going to reach out to G L O direct. I have been reaching out to our corporate grant management team, and haven't heard back this last time around. So within next week, if I haven't heard back, I'm going to reach out straight to G L O.
One simple, easy to answer question, have we been denied on any of our prior requests? So it's just all in the ether. Sounds good. Catch more fish if you throw more lines in the water. What a colloquial phrase, smart buddy, Uncle Judge.
That sounded like let them have it, so I mentioned that in one Commissioner's Court, I apologize, that is a New Orleans commercial that was called Frankie and Johnny's, if you get a chance, look it up on YouTube, but they had a big guy with a big cigar selling furniture, and he would give special credit, and his favorite comment was let them have it, I mentioned that in court, I apologize for that.
We thought you were being a little aggressive. You're giving him a voice, yeah. All right, anything further? Moving on, agenda item number twenty-seven, American Rescue Plan, Air Base Status of Projects, gentlemen, any for to report? Such good news.
Um, we have finished our final allocations before the deadline on the thirty-first of December, so everything from here is just finishing up projects.
Awesome job, y'all, seriously, thank you guys so much, to, you know, Auditor's Office, the committee, Jen, and everybody in the county that worked on this, I mean, that was, it seems like we did, far be it from a politician to pat himself on his own back, but I think we did a really good job of this, and none of the credit is mine, it's all y'all's. Thank y'all for doing it.
I know we did for the, the, the whole of B County, and what I'm trying to do is get some, I want to know how everybody else did there. And I got some things in the works, to try to find out how other cities and counties spent their money, because we're extremely proud of the way we spent our money. Give some feedback, will they want to tell us? Yes, they will, it's public record, so, there's some things in the works, see, I would like to see a comparison of cities and counties around our area, and see, okay, you got X number of dollars, how'd you spend it? You got, how'd you spend it? This, this is a comparison, because I am extremely pleased with what we did, I really am. I know, you, you look at the fires in California, and you look at the fire department, and then you look at what we did with our money, where we granted every fire problem, all eight of them, $30,000, here's money to help you keep your operation. And they were building a 2.6 or $3 million emergency match, and we utilized our money to help people. A lot.
Strengthen our water system?
Strengthen our water system, and real water system, I am very, very pleased, we will probably never get that kind of money again, but I'm real pleased with what the court did, and the way it was allocated, and Jennifer did a great job in the auditor and the grant works, it just makes you feel good.
If we have to go back there twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two again, I don't ever want to receive a windfall like this again.
It wasn't always all smiles.
I did it by checking all the rates, too.
And we have one.
Yes, we do.
And why we should also, that we can share what we do.
I know, it, it, there's some stuff that works, it may not come to fruition, but we can stand there with our heads held high.
Of the $6.3 million, we did thirty projects, and the vast majority of them were to increase infrastructure or to help our facilities for the emergency services.
Thirty-three projects, and the majority is to help infrastructure.
To fix infrastructure and to fix areas that we're lacking, so that way we can get up to parks.
Well, I, I, I would like for the local newspaper to pick up on that and, and list what we did, and maybe what the city did. We don't know what the city did. I don't know.
Well, great job, really, really, great, great, great use of those funds. Anything further? Okay, we have no executive session items on the agenda today. One question, I want to get rid of the opportunity, all of my everseers, did I miss an agenda item? Or is there one that I need to go back?
I think we're trying to confuse us, pretty good, but, pretty good job.
I think so. Did we do all the?
You came back to seventy C and seventy.
Hold on, I, I, I just want us to, eight more minutes. I'm only here, I'm only here. Oh, was that, that was part of our?
You got it?
The... Was it part of the, I'm back to agenda item, so, I thought I was reading in here where we've changed some policies?
Were you looking at that?
Uh huh.
Yeah, that was the, they just added that to their resolution. That was the information they had added to the last, to the last one from the Dallas Sheriff's Office.
Yes, I was wondering where, we're expecting Commissioner Fadias to wax eloquently about changes to the policies and the justification behind it, so, I was, I'm looking forward to it this morning, but it's on the agenda, so you can talk. All right, I guess we can wrap it up. Agenda item number twenty-eight, adjournment, do I have a motion to adjourn? Not, not required, not necessary, I'm fine, go on.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, I was taking a quick note.
That's okay, take all the time you need, you have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
They are working on the board.
I'm not done yet, I'm not done yet.
Yeah, we said aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. I will adjourn the meeting. We're adjourned, thank you.